Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining the Selectmen's Meeting on February 4th at 7:00 PM 2013. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a few announcements tonight. First of all, I wish to clarify any confusion regarding a comment made with respect to the Senior Senate Director, position of the library, not the librarian. Around July roughly of 2012, I, when we had no counsel on aging people at that time, I, a resident asked me if the Selectmen had considered Lisa Sheever from the library to possibly volunteer to help, and, you know, with any monies available, to be compensated for her efforts to help us get the Senior Senate back on its feet. So I did approach her and ask her if she would be interested in being interviewed for that position, but I didn't want to ask her to be interviewed until I knew she'd be interested so not to put her on the spot. And that was our conversation, and I did speak with her a couple of weeks ago about that, again, to clarify that that is all we spoke about, and she did agree, and she would answer to anybody that would like to ask her about our conversation, and it was, there was no, there was no time in our conversation that I had hired her for the position as I was accused of doing. It would have been an illegal hire anyway, without the rest of the board being present. I thought it was a professional thing to do to see if she would be interested before putting her on the spot and bringing her into a meeting, a public meeting. Under the ethics laws, I am allowed, or any member of this board is allowed, to approach anybody within the town or within any other town to discuss possible negotiations of any item. As long as no deals are made out of quorum, there's no ethics law against that. So I just wanted to clear, clarify that with the people that thought that something was going on. Also, a reminder, the town offices will be closed on February 18th in observance of President's Day. The board's next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 19. Reminder to residents from the Tax Collector, third quarter real estate and personal property taxes were due today, February 4th. To avoid interest, if you have not paid your taxes yet, the office hours of the Tax Collector are Monday through Thursday, 9 to 1, and Wednesday evening, 6 to 8. You may also have a payment in the drop box located outside the front door of the Town Hall, which is at the top of the handicap ramp at that door. And I have a notice from the Town Clerk. Nomination papers are available for the open positions, which will appear on the election ballot at the annual Town Election on April 1st. The deadline to file nomination papers is February 11th. Please see the Town Clerk to obtain nomination papers. The following are the open positions available. Selectmen, three-year term, one position. Board of Health, three-year term, one position. Library trustee, three-year term, one position. Planning Board, five-year term, one position. Planning Board Associate Member, five-year term, one position. Town Clerk, three-year term, one position. Trustees of the Veterans Memorial Park, three-year term, one position, and they would like them to be a veteran. Trustees of the Veterans Memorial Park, three-year term, one position, non-veteran. BMR School Committee, four-year term. Millville Member, one position. Blackstone Member, one position. Constable, three-year term, two positions. Town Moderator, three-year term, one position. Nomination papers will be available at the Town Clerk's Office beginning Tuesday, January 8th, in 2013, and must be returned to the Town Clerk's Office by Monday, February 11th, 2013. Budget meetings. Finance Committee will begin their weekly budget meetings this Wednesday, February 6th at 6:30 PM. The Selectmen will meet jointly with the Finance Committee every other Wednesday, beginning February 13th. These meetings are open to everyone. Please attend the budget meetings with any questions or concerns regarding the Town Budget. And the special and annual Town Meeting reminder is May 13th at the MES School, 6:30 PM, and the annual will be at 7:00 PM. The warrants are open for submission of articles. The board will close the warrants on March 18th. Approval of minutes and warrants. We have January 7th, 2013, at 7:00 PM, which was tabled at the last meeting. We have, Charlie's not here tonight, so we have John. All right, we're gonna have to table that again.
No, you've got, um...
Oh, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one in front of me. Yep. So everybody was present? So motion to accept, January 7th, 2013, at 7:00 PM. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And January 14th, 2013, at 7:00 PM, motion to accept. Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain. If I was present at that meeting.
January 22nd, 2013, at 6:00 PM, I have to abstain.
As do I.
As do you. Uh, we'll have to table that, because Charlie's not present. Okay. Okay. Warrants?
No warrants.
Excellent. Okay. Marilyn is ill tonight, so she cannot come, so the Town Accountant will not be here for the reports of Town officials. The zoning board is also not here. Did they say they weren't coming?
No, I did not hear that.
Me either. Okay. Well, we'll move on to the first public forum. Okay, having nothing. Correspondence, okay. The only correspondence tonight is, is the, we're trying to button up the codification for the Town Bylaws. Just a reminder to all boards to review it, review their section. You don't have to obviously review the whole thing, but you can if you wish, with any concerns. And we really wanted them back, any concerns back by February 28th. I believe everybody got this email. Helen, right?
Yes, it went out hard copy.
Yeah. So, just reminding all the boards and committees to get back to Helen as soon as possible if they do have any concerns. So does anybody here? Did anyone here see any issues?
I haven't. It's pretty lengthy.
Yeah.
I'm gonna need at least another ten.
All right.
Or two. Hundred and sixty-six pages.
Okay.
Um, I'm assuming that they must read the old one, have proofreading for those kind of...
The codification company did it. Brackett and Lucas went through it.
Only there are all these Town Bylaws in which the Town's already approved.
Right. Yeah.
So it's just...
What we also did was we took copies of all of the annual Town Meeting warrants and the results of the Town Meetings. We went back in the annual reports, as far as we could, and sent them all along. So they really double and triple-checked everything that was even in our existing bylaws.
All right. So let me get any more discussion on that? Okay. Appointments and resignations, we do not have any tonight. Executive Secretary, report?
Um, the only thing is, we received a request from the Board of Health for permission to get legal advice, and this is with respect to a written complaint received by the Chairman of the Board of Health in connection with the person working in the department, and he would like guidance as to how to proceed. So I would totally support that recommendation.
Well, this is all, I thought this was like multiple ones. Well...
I make a motion that we give him.
Yeah. I mean, I'd rather him get it, advice from Brackett, than make the wrong move, and then we're liable for something.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay. And so it's motion, you did motion. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Helen, I'm just gonna put these under these. Okay, the extra.
Okay.
Yeah, that's really it. Just, I just wanted to also remind the board that next Wednesday evening, the 13th, you do have a meeting at 6:30 with the Finance Committee and Town Moderator to go over some procedures and common ground rules they'd like to discuss about Town Meeting. The following Wednesday, on the 20th, you're also meeting with the Finance Committee and the Town Accountant to go over revenue.
Yep.
And then the Wednesday after that, the 27th, and you can determine at that time if you'd like to keep it, but I do have you down as a meeting with the Finance Committee that evening as well, so...
Are they open at 6:30, by the way?
6:30, yes. So with the exception of this Wednesday, I do have you for the next three Wednesdays.
Are those all? Nothing's changed from the original email schedule, is right? Meetings?
I believe we did add one in, and I can't remember which one it is, and maybe the 20th.
I'll check it later.
The 6th. Not the 6th, but the 13th, the 20th, and the 27th. That's, that's all I have.
Okay. Excellent. 13, 20, 27, I got them all in there. Okay. So, all right, old business.
I just have one thing.
Yeah?
I know we've talked at length and at different times, but I was asked just to remind the townspeople that the use of the library in any other community other than our own is because of the state law through the Library Association or whatever, whatever their name is. And it's up to those, they recommend that any neighboring community do not lend us books because of funding and issues that their, their department puts out, and then each of those communities can then decide. None of the communities that I know around us has given that leeway to Millville, any of the communities. So for it to be said that any one community is because of bad blood, it's really, I mean, it really isn't.
Right.
It's what's put down by the mass libraries and what each of those towns and trustees do. So I just want to make that clear. We can still borrow books from our library, but those communities are doing what is asked of them through mass libraries.
Yep.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Yep. Thank you. All right. That's it for old business. We don't have any other than library stuff or any other old business?
Have we had any talk about seeing if there's anyone who can do an assessment on our town buildings?
I have contacted a couple of the local towns to see if their in-house engineering facilities people would be willing to work here. And the response I'm getting from my peers is that they would use an engineer to do that, that their in-house facilities people would not evaluate their buildings, they would actually call in engineers. So I have spoken with the Finance Committee, and I've made the recommendation that Millville do the same.
I did see in the paper that Milford is, I think it was Milford, is actually hiring an engineer as part of their, you know, online jobs, and there it was, Milford, for an engineer, so I don't know if that's something, you know, to contract with the town. Milford, for use of their engineer when they hire one, and, you know, especially if they're just hiring now, it's not gonna be top of their priorities, but I'm sure to offset their, their costs on his salary or her salary, it may be something they'll think about. So I don't know how many communities actually have engineers on there.
Yeah, I think the word engineer, it can be a professional engineer or this maintenance engineer, I think there are two different positions there. I think that a town would be required to have plans drawn up by a professional engineer regardless. I think what most of these towns are hiring are maintenance engineers, they're not professional, certified engineers. So I don't know that that position in Milford would, would help us out. I just certainly, I can give them a call, but I tend to think from conversations I've already had that that wouldn't be of any help to us. They do have the ability to help us if there were some repairs, but not the evaluation that we're looking for.
Okay. Okay. Move on to new business. We have DCR as an acquisition for easement. I guess they're asking us to waive, oh, I just lost that page. A waiver of 120-day notice pursuant to Massachusetts regulation, Regulations Regarding the Acquisition of Land or Interests in Land for the Conservation of the Commonwealth's Natural Resources, in particular 301 CMR 51.081B. I guess they're looking for us to sign a waiver for them to move more rapidly with their permits. So, and this is two for the walk slash bike way along the river, which is connecting the southern Blackstone Valley with the northern sections, which are well underway. Still quite a few years from completion, but while they have the resources, financial resources to do it, they'd like to keep moving as fast as possible, so that's what they're looking to ask, they're asking us to do. There is a two-page explanation, but in general, that's what they're asking. And then there is a map. It's black and white, it's a hybrid map of the, they actually already own the bridge that crosses the river and the Providence-Worcester Railroad. And that's the section that they're looking to complete.
So it looks like they're, it's the, it's the, um...
It's hard to see it, huh?
No, it's actually, no, I know exactly where it is, but the Fire Department uses another name. It's on the river before the salt shed with a, they already have like a roadway that goes down.
Right.
So they're looking at constructing almost a full pathway from there down to the Triad Bridge.
Right. Yep.
Which half of it is that they're gonna run?
Goes all the way.
I think the...
We've got it blocked off right now. If you turn it, it's gonna go all the way. You can drive a truck down there now.
Yeah. I think the Blackstone end is already underway, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, and I don't know where Oxbridge stands on their end yet, but I'm sure their, the DCR is on, getting all the same requests for them, for them. All right. Anybody motion to give them their waiver?
And you would also be authorizing the Chairman to sign these two certificates?
I make a motion to sign a waiver, and the Chairman will sign.
Yes.
What's that, Brian?
No, I'd let the motion go on to questions.
A second?
Second.
All right, now?
Um, I mean, I'm sure they're on top of things, but if we're deterring people now, do we know what their plans are in place to keep, you know what I mean? You have access right to the river, and they know you have access to the river and other spots too, but if we're now opening that and inviting that, I'm assuming, because they've done it up and down from Providence to Worcester, but are there going to be fences? Are there going to be...
Well, the ones I saw, and this is only what I've seen on the walkways, in Millbury over by the, the Blackstone Valley shops, they did put a, a fence well enough, structured well enough to keep people from jumping.
Keeps the honest people.
Keeps you honest, yep. You're not gonna ever stop it, but if, you gotta prevent it as much as possible. So that, that's, they have, and the ones in Milford also, I've seen, you know, as much safety precautions used as they can. And then, it's all being done under the direction of the state anyways, so...
And that is all town-owned property, with the exception of that home there?
Yes.
And the bridge, they already own.
Yeah, they own the bridge. So we own that, that property in law, yeah?
I believe so.
Any other? Just a few sec.
And again, this would just be an easement, so...
Right. Yeah, we're still gonna own.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. Well, yes.
You brought up the path going down to the river off 122. What is it they're looking to do there?
They're constructing, well, they're...
I know they're doing the bike path, which is gonna come out on Central Street.
Uh-huh.
And what are they looking for down?
They wanna go across the river, and then Blackstone...
Is this for construction or for the path?
For the path.
The path.
They'll come out on Central, I'm assuming, down Central to Main, and then catch that bike path.
Because that path, that area there is used as a drafting site to fill the hydrant system when the pond goes low.
Yep.
Uh, there needs to be access for a fire truck to go down there and put suction into the pond, and lay a line back to the last hydrant on Main Street, and we reverse pump the system. They start using that as a bike and walking path, because it's still gonna be truck access. I know through the rainstorms we had in 2010, we got some federal money, which we just completed reconstructing that spillway down there.
Yep.
With a new 48-inch galvanized pipe. We put regrind on that roadway to stop erosion. That's where the boat was just put in for the rescue in the river, the potential rescue. I don't want to, I personally wouldn't want to see that area blocked off for...
Yep.
...the future use of the town.
All right, well, who's our point person, Helen? We're gonna bring this back to their attention.
If they're looking to use that to, for construction access, I, that's the way I understood it, but if they're looking to use that for the walking bike path, I mean, I know when I met them, you know, they're talking about putting poles in enough for a small vehicle to get through for rescues or, you know, potential, maybe some medical calls, but not for a fire truck, to my knowledge.
Well, maybe they need to put a gate up, but we need to talk to the person and have that put in.
Before, yeah, I mean...
Well, we can, we can hold the motion and the second, and we won't vote on it until...
Or you can amend it with a statement that it needs to, you know...
We need to have that statement first before we vote on it. This is, needs to be a conversation with these people. Yep. Is that the only, the only issue for them?
No one would be talking about, but, yeah, they, the Fire Department utilizes that when need be for emergency purposes.
We need to keep that open.
I haven't seen what you're looking at, but, you know, hearing what you're talking about.
Brian, if you wanna look at the map, if you, to read the letter, they're stating so that DCR can acquire the easements from the Providence and Worcester Railroad, so this could be property that is not town-owned.
Yep.
And I'm not very familiar with the area.
Well, looking, going back to when we did the work from the federal money from FEMA, that was town-owned land.
Right.
How far down it goes off 122, I don't have that answer. I know years ago, there used to be a water mining shed down there, which is now more north up 122. See a little green building?
Mm-hmm.
It used to be down there, so I mean, to say whose land that is, the assessors would probably have a better idea of that.
Yep. Yeah, 'cause according to the letter, the Providence-Worcester only owns the track, where the tracks are, and I know they, they've gotta rebuild that bridge somewhere, so that's probably why they need an easement to do work there.
And my understanding from this letter is that all the board is doing is waiving the notice. I don't think denying this request or not voting for this is going to eliminate their ability. It looks as though that, I mean, they've already got the contract, they're already, they're ready to go, they're just asking you to waive the 120-day notice period, so...
Yep.
I mean, I think if you didn't, all they would do is have to wait 120 days, and then they could still proceed anyway.
I think this should just be some clarification, 'cause I, I didn't see them, from when I met with them, I didn't understand that they were gonna come out on Central Street and use that area. They were going straight down to Blackstone.
Yeah. The last paragraph on the first page says that the regs require certain steps prior to purchasing land or interests in land, so I just, I don't know, I think there's some questions that need to be asked, and I know our motion can be amended, but I'd like to just be sure that we have conversation with them, that we still have access, that that's available for the Fire Department. You know, are they looking, is this an easement, or are they eventually going to kinda take control of that, you know, land? Is this just waiving the 120 days down to 60 days so that they then can say, "We're purchasing and taking the land," which I'm sure the state probably can just do.
Well, they can, almost do what they want.
But if we have our hand to say we need to work together because we have a vested interest in this, how long have we been using that area?
I can remember.
I thought, maybe you might have a more accurate time, Brian.
I know the Milford Walkway has, across the walkway against Louisa Lake, there's, there's a couple of wells that we service, and there is a gate that, that the water company has, they, with the key, they can, and then we drive right onto the bike path. So they do make provisions if, if it's brought to their attention.
They have gates, the trucks can drive.
So...
Yeah.
We just gotta make it to their attention that we do use that for Fire Department.
On the bottom of, I mean, I'm not the one to read this, but here it shows you dotted line, it says, "Just construction access..." But I'm not a lawyer.
No, no.
I'm not legal.
So, all right.
Are we here next Wednesday for final? All right, could we just get some questions answered?
Sure.
If they're willing to remove their motion, and then maybe just put it as a one agenda item so that...
Yep.
Take care of it.
Yep, that's fine.
If you remove your motion.
Yep, I'll just, pull my motion. Okay. That's it.
Move your second.
Move my second. Final public phone? All right.
Your last meeting, we talked about the snowplow being taken from the salt shed.
Yep.
We've obtained a new one already. It's on the truck. There was talk about where to keep it. Should be at my house. Should be behind the town hall, behind the fire station. Well, in my opinion, none of those places work. I spoke with Chief Landry about it. After talking about it, there really isn't room behind the fire station, as of right now. You do realize, this is one plow now, in about three weeks, we're going to have the second one. You're talking about two sanders if you're talking about the plows. I'm just looking for your input, because there was talk at your last meeting about it. I have my ideas for the winter. We have some other potential ideas for the summer months.
Well...
Aside from going to rent a garage or some space or, which, I mean, would be ideal, but...
Would be nice if we had money.
I think my concern, Brian, because I, I had said, you know, I didn't agree with them being there, and one of the things was, was that the, you know, they wanted to put a camera, and I just felt like eventually you're just going to get videotape of someone hooded stealing the stuff, and that you're not going to...
Cameras worked at the fire station, didn't they?
Well, but, you know, there's also a different lighting. You also have a different circumstance where a person who's stealing those type of materials have an intent, and a, and a...
I understand.
You know, an intent to steal and, and to deceive, and, and I think the fire station is a different incident. So, you know, here's someone trying to make a profit off of us, or, you know, and profit themselves by stealing. So therefore, I think if, if there was a camera, they, you know, hide, they disguise, they do something. So my concern was just keeping the, the trucks in a, a place where it would be less likely, like something like that would happen. Where that is, I don't know.
I mean, it's tough enough, I mean, we may do, but it's, it's, for us to work, our trucks would be here at the town hall, which there isn't room, in my opinion, at all. Our tools would partially be at the salt shed, partially up at the school and our trailers. I mean, by the time we get everything together to do a job, we work until 1 o'clock every day, we're going to have to go put the stuff away. I mean, it's just not feasible to be running around place to place. I really feel the salt shed is the place to work out of. The gate is locked. It's unfortunate that they dismantled the nuts and bolts.
Yeah, they didn't take the lock off, they unbolted the gate.
No, they did not. Since, you know, we've done some different things, hopefully are deterred again, hopefully doesn't happen again. But really, I think there's other ways to protect our assets and by keeping them down there and working out of one site.
Would it be, would you be able to chain it, chain, I know the whole idea of the foot mount is to drive up, go on its own, but chain it to something?
Funny how things work, I mean, it's not a foolproof, but, you know, we got that, that plow was just over a year old.
Yep.
Was taken. It was less expensive to put a complete new plow on the truck than it was to buy the pieces that were taken.
Yep.
So that's what we did. A year, obviously, a year later. Well, the plows now come through with lock codes. As of right now, there's two people who know the code. That plow cannot lift, raise, go up, left or right. So if you see a plow getting dragged down the street, it's because someone stole it.
Yep.
You need not only that controller, but you have to have the code, and the code is what you want to set, and I could change it daily, I could change it weekly. That is one deterrent. The other, other things they've come up with, they've come up with a locking mechanism, which we are going to purchase and put inside the pins, so they can't even, I can't say can't, because they have ways around them.
Like a hitch ball?
Correct. So they, it's going to deter them from trying to hook up to it in less than a minute, it might take them 10 minutes.
Yep.
Those are other...
Well, if they want it, they're going to get it one way or the other.
Correct.
But you've got to make it hard. And like Jennifer said, you've got to keep the honest people honest, that's what locks do.
Mm-hmm. You know, I've had some people say to me, well, put them in the salt shed. Well, that's probably the short-term answer when we take it off in the winter months, but all summer long, I know they're stainless steel and everything, but there's a lot of electrical components, and sitting in a, a shed full of salt, it just isn't going to happen.
No, you can't put it in the shed, for sure.
I, I think that's, you know, potentially what can happen for, when we take it off, but for the most part, it's on the truck right now, and there's no reason we've got to take it off.
And then for the summertime, we could secure them pretty well.
We have things we're going to do with that.
Do you put it between the police garage and the fence? Will it fit in there? Or will they put the trailer in there?
No.
In the summer?
Yeah, you already had issues over there, that's why the trailer's out back. We're even talking behind the police station, come around this way and go in for the summer months.
Yeah. Oh, I wasn't thinking, I was looking between the fence and the...
But then you still get, you know, you get vandalism out here in the playground.
Yep.
And you, you could still have problems over there.
Just as the way.
Yeah. Yep.
All right, well, we'll do what we can, but I, I like the fact that there is a, a use of code for it, so, that's good. Okay.
The other thing, you know, people have made comments and don't feel that, boy, we're getting away again with a easy winter. We're out every other day, twice a day.
Well, there's still a lot of ice.
These dustings, these small amounts of snow, and, you know, soon as we get the phone call, it's slippery, and we've got to take care of it. We thought we had it the other morning, and that was an accident. They started calling again for black ice. I mean, we bet out a lot, which creates another reason people are seeming to see a lot of material on the road, sand and salt. When you're out at 1:00 in the morning, you're back out at 4:00 in the afternoon, then you skip a day, and you're back out doing it again the next day, it's going to build up fast. And the cold temperatures we had, you know, there was some other comments made, boy, our roads are white. I drive around a lot of places, and I don't think our roads were the only roads that were white.
Well, that's true.
Um, there's been, you know, a lot of time...
We have a different render this year than we had last year for sand and salt.
For what?
For the sand and salt.
No.
This year, we're getting it from Kimball's.
We're getting sand from Kimball.
Yeah.
Now, the salt is still coming from Eastern Minerals, still, still the same. By going out, just a little lesson, salt is best when it's got a moisture content to it. We were going out so much, we dug into the salt shed quite a bit. You remember last year when we had the repairs done, we had to fill the salt shed?
Yep.
Well, we never dug into it that far last year, when the material still sat in there all summer. Now we've dug into it quite a bit. A lot of that material was dry. Not telling you it doesn't work, but you see it bouncing in, on the road, and it goes to the side of the road. Doesn't work as effective as, you know, salt that has a moisture content to it, partially while you mix it with the sand to create the brine, which then works with the traffic and allows you to plow it after.
All right. I haven't seen any issues. I'm, I know it seems like, like there's a lot of material, but I have seen trucks out a lot too, so.
We have been. Thank you.
Well, for the record, I haven't heard of complaints.
I haven't.
And I tend to get them.
I've heard a lot of, geez, there's no ice. So that's good. I, I thought that it was, it seemed like more salt mixed in with the sand than usual, but...
Doing it at the road temperature is how it works.
Right.
The salt works down to about 10 degrees, give or take. After that, it almost settles off.
I think it's better that way, anyway, the way it is.
Good to watch.
All right, thanks, Brian. Anyone else? Okay, all right, so our next regular meeting is February 19th, 2013, at 7:00 PM, right here at the Longfellow Municipal Center. Motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Second. All in favor?
All right.